Board of Education, the board is thankful you have come out tonight and grateful to have you here. The December 16, 2020 Board Meeting of the Red Clay School District is now called to order. It is 7:00 PM. This meeting is again being held electronically. As I stated every meeting, on March 12, 2020, Governor Carney issued a declaration of state of emergency for the state of Delaware due to a public health threat. The state of emergency allows all public meetings of executive branch public bodies, including boards of education, to be conducted electronically, either by means of telephone conference or video conference call, or a combination thereof. We are holding this meeting electronically, especially due to the weather, so that people can access the meeting remotely via Zoom. This is our 10th electronic board meeting using Zoom. We've had a couple of hybrid ones in between, and we thank you for your continued support and patience as we continue to encounter new issues and work through detail. We learn something new each electronic and hybrid meeting, and we get better with each one. I'm certain we'll learn some more tonight. The information regarding this meeting, including information on how to access the meeting, was published on December 6, 2020, on the Red Clay School District website under the Public Notices section. Individuals may participate in this meeting via Zoom by completing the public comment form at least one and submitting it at least one half hour prior to the start of the meeting. In order to speak, you must provide a complete Zoom name, first and last name on the public comment form, and it must match what shows up on your Zoom account. As a courtesy to others and to prevent unnecessary disruption, all devices will be muted unless and until a person is recognized to speak, although all board members are unmuted throughout. As mentioned, if you signed up to speak, your Zoom name must be what you put into the public comment form that you completed in order to be able to be recognized to speak. School board members should keep their microphones unmuted throughout and their videos on. As board members are remote via Zoom, in order to maximize the effectiveness and orderliness of this meeting, we will have a roll call vote for each item to be voted on, and each board member should identify themselves by name prior to speaking. And during the items submitted by the board or during public any kind of time when all board members can speak, if you would let me know that you want to speak, we'll order who can go. So we're not all speaking on top of you. For everybody's notice, this meeting is being recorded. Okay, so to start the meeting, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. This is Ashley Sabo.
Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Casper seconds. Okay, ready to take a roll call vote? Do we have Martin? Excuse me, I don't see Martin and Faith. Do we have Martin and Dr. Newton, Mr. Wilson?
They're not in yet.
Do we want to wait for them? I hate to vote without them being present, but...
Well, we have a quorum, so...
Okay, I see Dr. Newton coming in.
We have a quorum.
Okay, all right. Oh, and there's Mr. Wilson. Okay, so Maria, we are...
Sure.
Martin and Faith, we are voting on the motion to accept the agenda as presented, just so you know. Okay, sorry, Maria.
Sure. Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
He's on mute.
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
And he's on mute.
Mr. Wilson, unmute yourself.
How about now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Seven, yes. unanimous vote, motion carries.
Great, thank you very much, Maria. So now we move on to student, staff, community recognitions, and then public comment. So there is a thank you to the Red Clay community, and I will recognize Ms. Taylor Green to present that. And Taylor is muted. And now gone.
She's here. She just needs a...
Oh, there she is. Okay.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Tonight, as we close out the calendar year with our last board meeting of 2020, we wanted to use this first portion of the meeting to say thank you to some of the many individuals and organizations who have been so instrumental in helping our students, staff, and the broader community through the COVID-19 crisis. As Superintendent Green has said again and again, it takes a community to get us through these challenging times. Tonight, we would like to send our gratitude to some of the many folks across the Red Clay community who have stepped up over these last several months to help students, families, educators, and others adapt to ever-changing conditions in teaching and learning. So first up, thank you to Acme Pike Creek for helping Skyline Middle School to provide food baskets for families during the holiday season, and the Skyline SSA for supplying all the essential materials and volunteers to support the Skyline Courtyard Beautification Project. Next slide. Okay, thank you to volunteers from the Penile United Methodist Church for adopting several Forest Oak Elementary School families and providing them with gifts for the holiday. The Eastburn Acres Civic Association for making another annual donation to Forest Oak to support student supplies and materials, and Deanna Scopus for donating art supplies to 4th grade students at Forest Oak. Thank you to our many community partners who provide a natural work environment for our students in the Meadowwood Transition Program to develop employability skills. These partners include Delaware Technical Community College, Ariel Fund, and El Diablo. Also, thank you to the Fatherhood and Family Coalition for providing Thanksgiving meals for Stanton Middle School families. Thank you to the Journey Church for providing backpacks full of school supplies for students in the Red Clay Early Years Program, and St. Phillips Church for providing meals for those families. A big thank you to Parkview Church, led by Pastor Chris Dio, and their outreach program at the Delaware Regional Dream Center for delivering back-to-school backpacks and over 400 Boxes of Hope to families at Heritage Elementary School, Austin D. Botts Elementary School, and Skyline Middle School. The boxes contained everything from holiday dinners to winter essentials like socks, mittens, and gloves. Big thank you to Bobby Shaw, President of Rayobi Tools, for donating these amazing cleaning tools to HB DePont Middle School, worth $400 each, to help keep the school germ-free. And thank you, Dr. J. Sri Taylor, for providing excellent advice, feedback, and yeah, advising feedback to HB on best practices for reopening during COVID. And thank you to the West End Neighborhood House, Kimara Anderson and her team, for providing HB students with a place to Zoom during remote learning. Big thank you to Joe Miller and friends for providing a wide variety of school supplies for students at Botts for yet another year, and to the Calhoun-School Fund for creating a virtual after-school program for Botts 4th and 5th graders. They hold sessions twice a week with communication arts and visual arts lessons and mentoring. Thank you to Red Clay Grandparent and former Red Clay bus driver of 25 years, Diane Myers, and a group of volunteers for providing Brandywine Spring School with hundreds of cloth masks that were sewn for students. And thank you to Tony Glenn for providing financial support to the Conrad Schools of Science Athletic Program during the pandemic. Much thanks to Harvey Hanna and the Delaware Kids Fund for supporting the school food pantry and coat closet at Ritchie Elementary School, to Barclay Bank for adopting Ritchie families for Thanksgiving and Christmas, and the McQuist Fire Company for showing up in a fire truck and other emergency vehicles to make a very special delivery of holiday presents to a Ritchie family. Thank you to the Speech Clinic for donating $4,500 towards food baskets for Red Clay families in need, including those who are experiencing homelessness. The Speech Clinic also purchased 350 books to provide one for every student in the Red Clay Early Years Program. Thank you to the Latin American Community Center for helping to ensure that students remain actively engaged in their virtual classrooms. The LACC's Youth Development Program has transformed the LACC into a community learning center hub with full-day academic support for students in Red Clay and surrounding school districts. Breakfast, lunch, and a snack are provided daily to 160 students from 22 different schools. Thank you to Hardwire LLC and Donate Delaware for donating 200,000 face shields to the Nemours Children's Hospital and Red Clay Schools with coordination from Senator Coons. You'll hear more about that in Superintendent Green's report tonight. Thank you to Jules Bruegel for donating hand-sewn masks to Red Clay employees in April, and Help for Healthcare Delaware, a Facebook group, for coordinating the sewing and distribution of face masks for our employees. Big thanks to Christiana Care for adopting 22 First State School students for the holidays. Each department of the hospital adopts a student and purchases gifts that the student has asked for or may need. Thank you to the Delaware Community Foundation for awarding a grant to support field trips and community outings for the First State School, and to Nemours Residents for donating holiday gifts to all First State School students for another year in a row. Thank you to Kingswood United Methodist Church for making a financial contribution to help students in need at Marbuk Elementary School, to Pastillas, Rojas, Palacharia, and Navera Tucumbo for providing another year of support for multicultural events at Marbuk, and Harvey Hanna for sponsoring Operation Warm at Marbuk, which provided 420 winter coats for students. Thank you to Calvary Presbyterian Church, Friendship House, St. Matthews Church, and Legendary Buzzi Cook for providing Thanksgiving meals for close to 40 families from Richardson Park Elementary School. Also to Five Points Fire Department for donating school supplies for Richardson Park students, and the Food Bank of Delaware and Harvey Hanna for donating backpacks, food pantry items, and meal distributions to support Richardson Park students. Thank you to the City Light Vineyard Church, Pastor Christian Dunn, Shannon Lynch, and Nick Palcovitz, with initial coordination through the nonprofit Charis Mark. City Light Vineyard Church has provided over 10,800 breakfast and lunch meals for families at Lewis Dual Language Elementary School and the surrounding community. Also, Scarlet Note Church Outreach Ministry, Diana Matos and Ruthie Door, thank you for donating 17 Thanksgiving dinners to Lewis families. And the City Church of Wilmington, Pastor Jason Seega and Assistant Pastor Israel Ruiz for donating 100 reusable water bottles to help Lewis students stay hydrated at their desks during in-person learning. Thank you to Don Stockley with Sweet 16 APIRA for supporting the animal and plant science programs at Thomas McCain High School by helping students to start and maintain beehives, which they'll then turn into a school-based honey business. To Joni Burns for donating $3,500 worth of AV equipment to McCain's Audio-Radio Pathway and student-run business, Next Gen Media, and Highmark Delaware for awarding a grant to support transportation costs for 25 McCain students to participate in a new patient care program at Dell Tech that prepares students to enter the healthcare field. Thank you Harvey Hanna for hosting a Newport Sleepout event in November to collect wormcoats for all of our Highlands Elementary School scholars, and St. Anne School, Ursula Academy, and Christine Campbell for collecting pajamas to help Highlands scholars stay warm this winter. Thank you to Rhodes &amp; Morrow LLC for donating $2,000 worth of school uniforms to Warner Elementary School, and AJ English and his team of community mentors for providing wraparound supports for identified at-risk students at AI High School, helping to bridge the gap between the school and home for families who have limited resources. Big thank you to David and Bernadette Mills of High Impact for providing self-care packages for staff and food items for families at Alexis I. DePont Middle School, to Aracelio, Carabio, and the Latin American Community Center for providing AI middle students with virtual and in-person tutoring services, and for providing resources for families such as food, electricity, and other basic needs. And thank you to Brandon Furrow of the Hilltop Lutheran Neighborhood Center for providing a variety of resources to AI middle school students, including tutoring, remote learning support, meals, and a hub for the school to transfer supplies and materials to families. Big thanks to the Journey Church for beautifying the halls at Anna P. Moat Elementary School and providing Thanksgiving dinners for families and backpacks full of supplies for all students. To St. Barnabas Episcopal Church for donating gift cards to help Moat families buy groceries, and to Dining for Women for donating clothing for students, and a special gift for 5th graders in lieu of the school's originally planned empowerment tea event. Thank you to the Friendship House for providing short-lived students with school uniforms, clothing, and hats as they return to school this fall. To JP Morgan for donating various supplies to support in-person learning and online learning, and to Carol Norman from the Eastern Region Church Ushers Association for donating 600 books for students to build their very own at-home libraries. Thank you to Twisted Tomato, Argia Brewery and Pizzeria, and Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Pike Creek for holding a Takeout Takeover to help the Linden Hill Elementary School PTA raise funds for various school projects, including an outdoor classroom. Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Pike Creek also provided vouchers for Linden Hill families throughout remote learning. And the Goddard School of Newark for donating $2,000 towards Linden Hill's outdoor classroom structure, which will be finalized in the spring. And thank you to the United Way of Delaware, Scholastic, and the Interdenominational Church Ushers Association for donating hundreds of new books for Highlands students, and Christian Dunn and City Light Church for providing over 40 Thanksgiving food baskets and more holiday baskets for heritage families. Okay, again, thank you to Help for Healthcare Workers of Delaware for making masks for the John Dickinson School, State Representative Micromone for donating hand sanitizer for staff at Dickinson, and the Chinese American Community Center for donating 600 masks for staff at North Star Elementary School. Big thanks to Grace Lutheran Church members for donating hand sanitizer, tissues, and Clorox wipes to Cook Elementary School. The school then distributed those items to teachers, families, and the AI Children's Hospital. Thank you to Newcastle County Executive Matt Meyer for awarding a remote learning grant to help Cook purchase materials for students during remote learning, including wiggle seats, headphones, at-home libraries, fun activities, and items for brain breaks. That's it. All right, so as you can see, we had many to thank. These were some of the major contributors who have supported us through this last year, and we just wish everyone a happy holiday and safe holiday, and thank you for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green, and that is really a very wide and broad and encompassing community support. So thank you to our community and everyone that's helping. We appreciate it. Okay, so now we move on to public comment. And again, thank you for coming out to tonight's board meeting to share your thoughts and concerns. Under Board Policy 2006, the board encourages the staff and community to share concerns regarding school issues and educational programs. Sharing can be done verbally, in writing, and by speaking at the meeting. Under Board Policy 2006, the board shall provide a time period of up to 30 minutes at each board meeting for public comments, which time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Speakers are requested to give a written copy of their remarks to the superintendent. Speakers are limited to a three-minute time period. The time will be monitored, and you will see a timer on the screen to note when your time is up. Speakers will be unmuted by the Red Clay team when it's time to speak, and when time is up, the mic will again be muted. So again, thank you very much. And our first speaker is Mr. Stephen Fackenthal. Welcome, Mr. Fackenthal.
Good evening, board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, board. My name is Stephen Fackenthal, music teacher at Ritchie Elementary and Vice President of the Red Clay Education Association. I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of our Executive Board in opposition of the resolution of the school board's role in planning for hybrid reopening. Over the years, the board and the Red Clay Education Association have worked hard on issues of common interest in making sure our members are able to meet the needs of all students. We have held coffees, given public comment, and invited you into our classrooms to show you that our best interest is ensuring our students have everything they need to be successful. RCA has also worked with the board on a number of policies and initiatives that have required board action over the years, and we believe that relationship has been fruitful and productive as a means for moving our district forward. However, last month, some of our members shared concerns with us that a resolution was being introduced that, if passed, would limit the board's vote on the matter of any future district plans for how students and staff return to school during the COVID-19 pandemic. First, RCA understands the role historically the board plays in the district as its governance body. We respect that role. However, we believe firmly that at times the board needs to step out and vote on issues of importance to its constituents. We believe the severity of COVID-19 and the implications for keeping schools opened or closed physically requires the board to take a position so that board members can go on the record in this critical moment in history. RCA is backed up by the Delaware State Education Association, which stated in a release dated November 16 that no school board should be relinquishing the right to approve a reentry plan or relinquish the right for the public to weigh in on their plan. The board took the right action several months ago in bringing the district's reopening plan to the public for comment, discussion, and vote. Public comment was long, but it was necessary to hear the voices publicly and not just through board-received emails of a community that is engaged and wishing for a full transparency from the district and board. The board has a long history of voting on issues viewed as controversial, from SROs to priority schools to redrawn attendance zones to inclusion. This board has never been afraid to take tough votes on critical issues impacting our communities. RCA believes that the board must continue to work in that tradition. How our schools reopen is very much a topic that should be discussed and voted on by the board. The Red Clay Education Association Executive Board urges the defeat of this resolution at tonight's meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fackenthal. And next is Ms. Shontae Vincent. Welcome, Ms. Vincent.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Yeah, so my only comment was just a general question about how the school district and the school board was taken care of or helping students that have IEPs to thus be successful while online remote learning was still in place. And the reason why I'm able to ask that is because my son has an IEP through the school board, the Red Clay School District, which we actually just came into a couple of months ago. So these are some of the things that we were just having some difficulties with and just wanted to find some answers in reference to, and also about what the school district also was doing about the absences. I received a letter the other day, and it was just questionable how, not so much a questionable, maybe a system-based, but if the student would actually be held accountable for some of the unexcused absences in reference to now.
Okay, Ms. Vincent, the board doesn't typically respond to public comments that are made, but I am certain that after this meeting that Mr. Green and his team will get up with you.
Okay.
And speak about these issues with you, and perhaps even Dr. Sarah Celestin will too on the special ed front. But I leave that to Mr. Green.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Vincent. And then the last person that signed up to speak is not here, so we will move on to the approval of the minutes. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session of November 18, 2020? Dr. Bohm moves. Is there a second?
Second, Martin Wilson.
Mr. Wilson seconds. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Maria, we should be taking a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And now, I have a motion to accept the minutes from the November 18, 2020 regular session. Dr. Bohm moves. Is there a second?
Second. This is Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews seconds. Any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing nothing. Again, a roll call vote, please, Maria.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we move on to action items. And the first action item, the recommended action, it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the renewal of the administrative contracts for 2021, 2022 school year as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
That's Mr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And is there a second?
Second.
Second is Dr. Bohm. Is there any discussion? Okay, I hear and see nothing. So with that, we will move forward with a roll call vote, please, Maria.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So the next action item is on Board Policy 4,005.1. It is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve Board Policy 4,005.1 as presented and submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved. This is Ashley Sabo.
Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second. This is Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews seconds. Thank you. And is there any discussion? I know that Dr. Broomhall, I believe, is a speaker as well, so if there's any questions or discussions, I believe Dr. Broomhall can respond.
Could Dr. Broomhall just talk a little bit about the policy?
Sure. Dr. Broomhall?
Yes. So the policy 4,005.1 was necessitated by a change in regulations in that all school districts must have a formal board-approved policy for sexual harassment and the grievance process that follows. So essentially, what we provide you today was written by our staff attorneys. It is mirrored in other school districts as well.
So do multiple districts across the state have the same exact policy, Dr. Broom?
They receive the same recommendation from the same attorney that we have, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Brandywine is very similar to ours.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, hearing nothing or hearing none. Maria will take a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. The next action item is Board Policy 9,005, and it's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve Board Policy 9,005 as presented and submitted.
So moved. This is Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Bohm seconds. Any discussion?
This is Jose Matthews. I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to thank the Board for considering this policy. Having a student representative on the Board is something that I have imagined during my campaign prior to me running on school board. It was something that I brought up at my very first Board meeting a couple of years ago. So it really brings me with great excitement to have more voices here at the table, to have students represented here on the table and listening to their concerns and engaging. So I'm certainly excited to support this policy. I know that, you know, there are many to thank that have contributed to making this happen. So I just wanted to thank the Board and thank the community for our collaborative work on this.
Thank you.
Dr. Broomall, can I ask a question?
Yes.
First, again, I would like to say, I would like to echo what Mr. Matthews was saying, that I'm really excited that we are going to have a student on our school board. I think that's absolutely wonderful and it's very exciting. I know some members of the Board have worked on this for a very long time. In the, I have some questions because I have some students that I've been talking to. And does it say in the actual policy that the school board rep will be the student government president? Is that who's going to be the person on the Board?
It says that the student government president or senior class president from the seven high schools will serve on the Red Clay Board. If that person is not able to, they'll work with their school principal and the director of secondary schools to develop a process to designate a member to the student council.
Okay, so some of the students have brought to my attention a concern that they have, and the concern is that they said that often the student officer election is basically a popularity contest because the person who gets that position is someone who is more popular and because students of color are often smaller numerically than white students, that they're concerned that there won't be minority representation if we're just using the president of the student body or the student government president. So I think that's something. I don't know how that decision was made. I was a part of those conversations, but I think that that is really a legitimate concern. And it's not only students of color who are expressing that concern, but a lot of white students have also expressed that concern. And then it can be spread over into other areas as well that usually, if you're talking about a student government president, that person's usually going to be heterosexual. That person's usually going to be from a higher socioeconomic status. So some of the isms that we're trying to address in obtaining a school board rep from the student population, they're mimicked in this process. So I think that's something that needs to be considered, and if that language maybe could be altered, and maybe we let the students decide. I know the superintendent has a student council. But that is something that I was raised with me today by students, and I think that it's really important to listen to student voices.
So we did have students on the committee that helped develop the policy. Originally, our policy said that the student government president or senior class president would work to develop a process at the school level to develop who would be the representative from the school. Then we heard some feedback that they kind of felt like they wanted to have a part in being part of the Board, and that is why it was changed to the student government president or the senior class president.
And so I would, my question or sort of my response to that would be, being the school class president is an honor for someone to hold, and now they're going to get a second honor. So maybe some of that power could be disseminated amongst other people so that the president is not also serving on the Board because then we could have a variety of voices in those positions, and we could increase diversity in terms of student participation and student advocacy because you'd have multiple people.
We are certainly open to the Board, and if they like to change it, we'd be happy to change it. This was the recommendation that came out of our committee.
So I'd like to make a motion to just, we could remove that portion where it says the student representative to the Board is the student government president. We could just remove that. And then we could think, because we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have some time to work on this. We could think about how we could make that position more inclusive and have more people participating in the decision of who that is. And I think that might be a great endeavor for the diversity committee to work on because I know I'm on that committee and we talk a lot about student voice and student representation.
My concern with, I don't have necessarily a concern with doing that, Adriana, except we did have students at the committee, they felt very, they felt that this was something that they wanted. So we did hear student voice and we didn't get any of the comments that you're raising now. And there were two opportunities for students to do that.
And I hear you loud and clear on that. I get you, Kathy. One of the people actually raising the concern was one of the people who ran the student town hall, and they actually wanted to sign up for public comment tonight, but they didn't have the opportunity to. And because they missed the time slot, they weren't able to make their public comment. But it is something that they've been talking about, and I think we should consider it.
Well, I think it's for the students to consider, not for us to consider.
Well, we have to consider it because we're voting on it.
Right, and we have a policy in place that the students helped to develop. You know, so I think we ought to be going with what the students have developed, and if they then want to change it or recommend that it be changed, I fully would support that. But at this point in time, we had two meetings, we had students present, we had an opportunity for public comment. We got none. We got absolutely none, if I'm right. Is that right, Dr. Broomall?
That is correct.
And, you know, now, and I get that people may want to have a different view, and I think they have an opportunity to do that, but I would have them do that after the policy was in place.
And so I guess generally just speaking, you know, the process would be, and we had this discussion early on just in terms of the nature of how a single student representative, how it would be difficult for that individual student to capture the diverse voices of all the students across the district. And so as Dr. Bohm indicated, obviously, there will be additional time to engage all of our students and student representatives on a number of platforms. But I think the initial point would be, you know, agreement on the fact that we are advocating for students to be on and serve on the Board as a student representative. And the policy put forth has involved students. But obviously, if it's on behalf of students, we can continue through multiple mediums, whether that's the diversity committee, the student diversity committee members and that we're going to be moving forward with to just iron out the details. And again, if the students decided they want to bring this back before the Board for a modification to the policy. Again, I think it's, I don't want to mire the opportunity that we have to be inclusive as a district to encourage student participation. And again, we are, you know, supporting not only student voice but student action in the district. But we knew this is going to be a complex nature by which, you know, a single student voice on the Board wouldn't necessarily be representative of all of diverse opinions and thoughts and processes of our students throughout Red Clay. And so if this is a matter, again, because it's due to be implemented starting July 1, 2021, so there will be ample opportunity to continue to engage our students. But the process as it stands now did involve students. And we don't want to diminish that, the voice of the students who were at the table who supported or helped recommend this policy that's being presented before the Board at this moment. So I don't. I mean, whether you choose to amend it or put a footnote in the policy that obviously will continue to engage students, but again, it's a tough proposition. And again, we did discuss that previously just in terms of the nature of how challenging it would be for a single student to have the collective voice, so the diverse opinions, thoughts, processes, and backgrounds of all the students across the district. So let's just engage and continue to engage with our students, bring that back before the policy committee and the student representatives that served on it and allow our students to help us work through this process.
Right, we had student voice, and this is what the students wanted, and I would be hesitant to change it without getting student voice.
So there's a question in the webinar chat that everyone should have access to, and it says, and it's from a student, it says, can I ask the demographics of the student committee? So do we have that information?
I don't know an absolute demographic of each person. I will say they were all female representatives to the committee. But we did not ask what the demographics were.
There were, yeah, there were students and they were representing their student bodies. They came from different schools, and they were very involved in the discussion because I was at both the meetings. They were very involved in the discussions and very involved. We had a lot of discussion about how to go about it. And they were very, you know, they had a lot of voice into it.
There were no men on the committee, no male students?
There are no male student representatives.
And another person is asking, how were they chosen? And this is in the webinar chat, so everybody can see it.
This is Ashley Sabo. So I just wanted to say that I think it's almost two issues. So we have the policy that we're presenting that has kind of a guideline and a standard for how student representatives are chosen. And the other issue is whether or not school elections are a popularity contest. And rather than, rather than making it be left open to the school to figure it out or to be kind of a gray area of how they're chosen, if we keep the policy the way it is and then work with the schools to make sure that they're looking at kind of the democratic process. Because I think that we've seen even at recent graduations, whether it's been class presidents, it's been valedictorians, we've seen diversity in the students. And I think it's kind of dismissive to say that it's not going to be, that students of minority groups don't have a chance to be representatives on the group. And the other thing is, they're gonna have, the student representatives are going to have an advisor with the secondary schools advisor working with them to help them get input from other students. So it's not going to be just them giving their input. They're going to be guided on how to talk to the student body and so I think it's almost two issues. You keep the policy so that it's an outlined way, just like we have our elections in a set way. But then working with the schools to ensure that they're including diverse groups and whatnot.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, Maria, do you want a roll call vote on the motion?
Sure. Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, well now the next action item is the the resolution on the school board role in the plan for hybrid reopening. It's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the resolution on the role of the Board in the plan for hybrid reopening as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved. Dr. Newton?
Dr. Newton moves. Is there a second?
Second. Oh, Jason Casper.
Mr. Casper seconds. So thank you. Any discussion?
Well, you know what, I just want to bring up the fact that I think it's, I think it's very important that we place a lot of trust in Mr. Green and his administrative staff in putting together, you know, coming up with ideas and making decisions. I have a little bit of a problem. It almost makes me feel like we're micromanaging Mr. Green and I just, I think, I think everything that Durrell has done has been with the with the intention that everything is, you know, for the good of the students and the families and the staff. You know, there's, I was talking about this earlier with my neighbor, and there is no, I don't care what graduate courses or training that any of these administrators have gone through. Nobody's trained to deal with what we've been going through this past 10 months or nine months. So I just, I have a lot of faith and confidence in Mr. Green and the staff that he discusses and confers with on a daily basis. I just, I don't think it's the Board's place to micromanage the superintendent. But that's my, that's my personal thought on it.
And I just wanted, this is Ashley Sabo, I wanted to say one thing about it. I wanted to make a reminder that we're not taking away the Board's input or even the community input or the union's input. We still want to hear from everybody. We can still provide guidance. We can still provide our thoughts to Durrell and his team. But we have a specific role as the Board. It's been outlined in our policy, and we should not be stepping outside of that unless we're going to then go and change policy. So we need to stay in our lane, and we need to let Durrell and his team do their job with input, of course, and they've shown that they want input, and that's not going to change just by this resolution.
And so if I may, for the Board, I think there are, as you say, your decision. And again, this isn't an essence, or do I see this as a vote, a confidence, or a lack of trust in my ability to make decisions on behalf of the school district community as it relates to, you know, the pandemic? I think the broader conversation, as I see it is, what input in terms of a vote does the Board feel that they need to make? And the process of the day-to-day operations? Because we can call emergency meetings to levy a vote, but what we've done as a district is adhere to the gating criteria that was set forth for us as a district. We've monitored the health guidelines. We've worked with the union. We meet with them on a regular basis. We've communicated in this last transition back in person, understanding that there wasn't a issue by the governor's office. But we monitored the gating criteria that was set before us, and that was the basis of the decisions that were made. And in that decision-making process, again, we continue throughout the reopening, in-person, remote, have been paying keen attention to what's been going on in our schools and within the community. And so, you know, it hasn't been a situation where administratively, we haven't sought the input or valued the input of our stakeholders, both within the community, from our employee groups, or more importantly, input from the Board. I would love for us to be aligned as it relates to the decisions that are made. Ideally, that's how we will function and thrive as a school district. But with that being said, there have been a number of instances as it relates to this pandemic where information is presented in a manner in which we have to make operational decisions. And given those circumstances, where does the Board stand with regards to weighing in and determining whether or not that would require a vote? And so based on this last decision, again, it was recommended that in-person learning pause as of Monday, going through December the 14th through January 11th. And we elected to do so starting December the 7th. And that had to do with, you know, the operational challenges and having over 100-plus staff members quarantine. And the gating criteria that we've been following for the past six or plus months had indicated red categories now, which are three, all three, which indicates significant community spread. And so taking all of those factors in place are what ways. And so taking all of those factors in place are what weighs on the decisions that we make. And, you know, again, we can seek input. We can get guidance, but I would think for the board in that instance, how do you feel a vote would have changed or informed that decision? And, you know, however the board chooses to proceed with it, again, we will take and as we have taken input to make the best decision, understanding that in this particular situation and since as we've lived throughout this pandemic, no real situation is ideal for the entire community. And that's the reality of what we're continuing with and what we'll continue to deal with. Hopefully there is light at the end of the tunnel and we can get more stability in school. But this isn't a situation where, you know, I'm seeking the confidence of the board. This is more important than decisions that need to be made on behalf of our students and families throughout the district. And that's inclusive of stakeholders and having shot away president of the team from input.
So I had something to say as well. I know it's a difficult issue and we are in difficult times as everyone knows. And this is really kind of tied to the state of emergency and the odd health situation we're in that leads to a, an educational crisis. So I went back and I looked at the law and I looked at our board policy. And as we all know, I mean, as the law states, 14 Delaware Code 1043, the school board has the authority to determine policy and adopt rules and regs for the general administration of the schools and to supervise the schools. 14 Del C 1049 sets forth specific items that we deal with, none of which deal with whether it's remote or in-person. Our board policy 2001 says that we oversee policy, rules and regulations for governance of the schools. And there's a variety of items, but none relate to remote versus in-person instruction. Board policy 2002 lists a number of board functions, which include policymaking, educational planning and appraisal, staffing and appraisal, financial resources, school facilities, communication with the public and judicial function. Board policy 2009 indicates that the board is responsible for generally supervision, for general supervision of the district and seeks the advice and counsel of the superintendent on all matters relating to the operation of the district. As we know, because we, you know, having been through a recent election and spoken to a number of agencies, including the RCEA and the Delaware PTA, everybody knows that it's very clear that the board develops, the board sets the direction of the district through policy and hires the superintendent to carry it out. So we're policymakers and the superintendent is the execution, he executes, he or she executes the policies that we develop. Under board policy 3001 and 3002, the superintendent and the administration ensures the environment and the instruction meets the goals of the board. So, you know, I hear what the RCEA is saying. I know that they meet weekly with Mr. Green. I know that the board has a very good relationship with the RCEA and the board wants to keep that relationship with the RCEA. Or at least I would like to keep that relationship with the RCEA because it's very fruitful. And we get a lot of benefit out of hearing what the RCEA has to say. And they also have a weekly time to meet with the superintendent and can express concerns and really discuss operational issues at that time. I believe that the operational assumption is that school is in person. And I think we have all learned that students learn best in person. We just have this overarching state of emergency that's kind of over us. So the board gives, there's broad, we delegate a broad amount of authority to the superintendent during the state of emergency with the expectation, I believe, that we're going to return to school in person. We, I believe that by supporting the resolution, we recognize that the superintendent is the one that understands the operating needs of the school and what is going on in the schools on a day in and day out basis. Something that we as board members aren't at all necessarily familiar with because we're not in the schools on a day in and day out basis. And we aren't seeing what's occurring in all of the schools on a day in and day out basis like the superintendent is. We still, the public still has the opportunity to present, whether it be by calling us, by writing us, by speaking at board meetings. So the input and the level of input can still remain the same. And so I believe that given the whole setup of boards and superintendents that we set policy, superintendent carries it out. And I'm not sure what the policy is other than going forward with, you know, the policy of denying this motion. I'm not sure what it is. Is it that we're saying? I don't know what it is that the policy is that the RCEA is suggesting that we vote on at this point. But seems to me this resolution clearly sets forth the policy that's already, that's already developed or the framework that's already developed in both the law and our board policies in terms of how we are.
This is Jose Matthews. I have some comments as well. So I'd like to share that three years ago, I decided to run for this school board seat, knowing full well that the growing Latino and Hispanic communities in Red Clay had never seen, had never been represented by someone who looks like them and has lived their very unique experiences. A community that though growing larger has been virtually ignored in policy and political circles, I felt demanded a seat at the table. And that is what guided me through an engaging and rigorous campaign process. As someone who has experienced both direct and indirect racism his entire life, I had to prepare myself mentally for the run, knowing full well I would be exposing myself to individuals who would seek to judge me based on my age, race and sexual orientation. Instead of my ideas, I hope to bring to this board and Red Clay. I got through the campaign relatively unscathed, but couldn't possibly imagine that the true hurdle to progress would be the board on which I am serving right now. At multiple points in my term, I have been confronted with what I can only describe as implicit bias and racism from individual board members and the board as a whole through actions taken against me and other board members of color. And I count this resolution as one of those. But before I talk about why I feel this resolution is inherently racist, I'd like to go through some history. First, in December of 2018, I prepared a number of questions I wished the charter school of Wilmington to answer during its renewal process. As a voting member of the board, I thought it would be my right to have questions answered. And if I couldn't get them answered at that meeting, then I would have been perfectly fine receiving those answers a few days later. Not only were my questions not asked, but my right to even ask them were put up for a vote by the board as a whole. Who does this? Is this necessary? This is what we call disparate impact. Other members of the board had their questions answered, but my questions, the questions of a person of color had to be voted on to even be allowed to be asked. The vote failed and my questions were not allowed to be asked of CSW leadership. The disparate impact and treatment of my questions is a crystal clear example of racism. Another example of this disparate impact towards a person of color is my attempt to introduce amendments to actions items this board has considered. Now, for those who don't know, amendments are completely legal and are a part of Robert's rule of order. I was, I was the go-to for Robert's rule in high school on my FSBA team. So I know what I was doing was completely kosher. To have been told multiple times in the last two years that my attempts to amend motions were illegal after consulting, after consulting with our district's legal team. By the way, legal advice that wasn't shared with the whole board is deeply concerning. Knowing full well that other individuals have amended motions over the years, why are the amendments from a board member of color considered out of order? This is another example of disparate impact and by definition, clear racism. Another example of disparate impact is the number of times I have requested information from the district and have been slapped on the wrist by other board members complaining that my requests are too laborious. Board President Thompson took the time to share that if I wanted my request for information processed, then they would have to be held to a board vote. And since I don't sit in the majority of this board, that means that my request would ultimately fail. Again, putting the request of board members of color up for a vote when history would laugh at the idea of demanding a board vote to get information, a board member request. Disparate impact again. And whether or not the intent was to treat a person of color differently, the outcome, the impact is that I was treated differently. That is systemic, deeply institutionalized racism. And now we are where we are. Debating a resolution whose purpose, I believe, is to slap the wrist of me and Dr. Bohm. For those of you who are wondering, Dr. Bohm and I were approached by dozens of residents a few months ago about the district's plans to reopen schools. We listened to them and urged them to reach out to the district. They did. And a meeting with Mr. Green and Board President Thompson was convened via Zoom. Dr. Bohm and I attended, but made little to no comment. Our constituents used their voices to demand the board take a position on how and when schools would reopen. During the meeting, Board President Thompson was clearly uncomfortable at this idea. However, board policy is clear. Two board members may request a special meeting at any time. Dr. Bohm and I followed the policy, requesting the meeting, and hundreds of engaged citizens came out to witness and share their thoughts. I will always believe that it is the board's responsibility to take positions on controversial issues. I support the idea that this board should be voting on how and when schools reopen because it is a controversial topic. And for the board to say that only our superintendent and his team should be making this decision and by consequence, accepting the potential scorn of the community is insulting to me. This board must go on record with these issues. And then to be held accountable, however the chips may fall. That's how politics works. And whether or not you agree, we are in political positions, elected to do this job on behalf of our constituents who have placed us here. So as above, I see this resolution as an attack on two people of color who followed a legal process for calling a meeting and adding an item to the agenda. When in the past has this board passed resolutions limiting what kinds of actions white board members could take? Two words, disparate impact. It's a thing and it's racist. This resolution has the full consequence on silencing and punishing people of color. Even if that wasn't the intention of those who support it, that is the result. Instead of some, instead of some of you using your privileges to work in unison for all students and families, you're using those privileges to silence people of color. I feel that for too long on this board, at least for as long as I've been here, policy has been weaponized against people of color. When members of the board majority don't like something or don't want something to be considered, proposed by me or Dr. Bohm, such as the lengthy and cumbersome two years it took us to finally approve a student representative to the board after being initially told, no, this legally cannot happen. Members are all too quick to cite some policy or advice that they've received from legal counsel as opposed to simply asking themselves, is there a better world out there? Why are we not considering things that could be? Just because this is the way things have always been. We are the governing body of this school district. And we have the power, authority and ability to go big, to be the conduit for the dreams of our students, their educators and our community. Instead of always putting ideas down, this could be the board that moves forward and creates lasting progressive change for the Red Clay community. All these examples above, and I'm left wondering, is my voice welcome here? Is my Latino queer young voice welcome among the respectability politics and expectations of the white majority? How should I behave on this board? What do you expect and demand of me? Unfettered agreement with whatever you put forward? A shuck and jive dance as a respectable obedient person of color? Or do you just want my silence? Remember, if you're feeling uncomfortable right now, that's the whole point. These conversations are meant to be difficult and at times completely uncomfortable. But we can no longer ignore the discomfort. It may cause some in the majority if it means that those who have been historically marginalized are finally, finally having their voices heard. I will be voting against this resolution because I don't feel it's the right thing to do. And will be voting against this resolution because I feel it sets a bad precedent and could lead to more resolutions attempting to limit board's voice and its responsibility to take positions on controversial issues. That is not what I was elected to do. I hope that the rest of you will join me and do what's right in voting this down tonight. If you want to be an ally or think you are an ally, then please act like one. Thank you.
I also have some remarks. And I just wanted to first say thank you to Mr. Matthews for your very thoughtful remarks and for showing your vulnerability and expressing real experiences that you've had on this board. They were powerful and I appreciate them. Thank you. So I did speak to our superintendent for a while about this resolution. And I just wanted to say that one of the things that we spoke about earlier and that he spoke about during our board meeting was that this is not a resolution about whether we trust our superintendent or not. That's simply not what this resolution is about. And I want to go on board saying that. So one thing I noticed in the resolution is that in paragraph one, there's a statement about needing seven days to notice a meeting, and that's incorrect. And I did speak with our superintendent about that to verify. We are in a pandemic and the governor has declared a state of emergency. As such, our board can call an emergency meeting within 24 hours. So that's definitely something that's inaccurate that is in the resolution. Another item that I wanted to point out was in paragraph three. There's the language of, it's quote unquote implicitly includes. And if we're talking about the statement implicitly includes, we're talking about someone's perspective. And if you look at the definition of implicit, it means not plainly expressed. And I believe since we are in the midst of a pandemic and we are in a state of emergency, everything our board does should be transparent and therefore it should be explicit. So I don't believe that relying on an implicit idea is a good thing at all. The other thing I want to say is that plans about whether a district should be opened or closed are not micromanaging a superintendent or a cabinet. If you look at governance, which is what boards are tasked with doing, governance is about making very difficult and hard decisions regarding how organizations, institutions, bodies, groups, et cetera, will function. And that includes making decisions about the actions and the affairs of our district. So the board's task of developing policy and voting on policy includes the very real and the very critical issue of whether or not our school should be opened or closed. Again, that is not micromanaging. That's part of our purview for the positions we've been elected to do. Elizabeth Held, in her article entitled, quote, "School reopening debate shows power of local school boards", writes that decisions about school reopening being made across the country are being determined by over 90,000 school board members who are voting on this issue. So when this resolution is presented, I have to ask, why would we as elected officials want to vote away our very right to weigh in on a very important decision? Want to vote away our very right to weigh in on a very important decision? Like I said earlier, this is not about trusting our superintendent. Superintendent said that. Um, so I want to say that I completely trust our superintendent. Um, I voted for Superintendent Green. I was very excited. When he became our superintendent and I've always given him the highest evaluations. I believe in superintendent as a man, as a leader and as a visionary. In the bottom of my heart, I do. This resolution is about absolving school board members. Of the responsibility of making hard decisions. So that we don't have to answer for the decisions we make. And as elected officials, people do need to make hard decisions. So I just want to say that voting is important. We saw in our last election. Both candidates running for president broke voter turnouts in American history. People recognize the importance of voting. We vote on a lot of things. We vote on local issues, state issues, federal issues. And I will never give up my right to vote. Too many of my people, too many people who are outstanding individuals. Too many people who are everyday people fought and died for the right to vote. Not just in this country, but in countries around the world. So I will never give up my right to vote, even on a school board. And so on the basis of these reasons, I'm opposed to a resolution that absolves the board from taking. An important vote. Thank you.
This is Ashley Sable. I just wanted to say just one quick thing on administrative point. The resolution specifically says that it cannot meet without a quorum of members or a proper and a properly noticed meeting requiring seven days notice. Unless determined to be an emergency. So it clearly states in there are rules and regulations. That there is a way to have a meeting outside of the seven day notice. So I just wanted to make sure that was notified. That everybody realized that that's actually in the resolution properly.
And I want to say that I believe we are a nation of laws. And we, there is a law governing what our job is. We have policy that governs what our job is. To respond to Mr. Matthews. Our own policy indicates that requests that entail compilation of materials not readily available or significant. Staff time shall require the board's approval. Our policy, our board policy is clear. And if there is any problem with that, perhaps there needs to be a motion to change the board policy. But that's our policy, just like it's our policies on what our job is. So thank you very much. I will be supporting the resolution.
This is Dr. Newton. I'd like to say a comment. As someone who has been both in a superintendent in this district as well as a principal and one who is now on the school board. Mr. Green needs to have the ability to make decisions quickly. Either we trust the superintendent or we do not. It is not our job to micromanage the superintendent and I'm not going to start now. I definitely support the resolution.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing non Maria will take a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Bone?
No.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
No.
Dr. Newton? Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Five yes, two no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Maria. So then we move on to the consent agenda. And it's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve action consent items A and B as submitted. Is there a motion?
Or move, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Second, Dr. Newton.
Dr. Newton seconds. Thank you. Uh, Maria roll call vote because we can't discuss action or consent.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Hold on. Yes. Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we move on to the superintendent's report. So Mr. Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Thompson. Welcome to members of the community who are joining us this evening. My report officially begins with just a recap of again, the decision. Uh, that was made to transition back to in-person learning as a result of the advisory. Stay at home advisory that Governor Carney issued on Thursday, December the third. I along with a number of other colleagues across Newcastle County. Made the decision to pivot to in-person learning, starting on Monday, December the seventh. And that came as a result again of the health guidelines and gating criteria that we as a district have been following throughout this pandemic. As a result of the reopening guidance that was issued to us. Uh, to familiarize our community, those three gating criterias involve new case rates. Um, percent persons positive initially that transition to percent test positives. And then average daily hospitalizations. And at that point in time, two out of the three red gating criteria. Were determined to be in the red, which indicated significant community spread. And therefore the decision was made a week ahead of the recommended time period, which actually started per the. Stay at home advisory were to begin on Monday, December the 14th. We made the decision due to operational challenges because also at that time, we had well over a hundred staff members who were being quarantined. I want to take my hat off to our staff members, our administrators, our teachers, our parent educators, custodial staff. School nutrition workers, students and families. I think by far we had the largest percentage and number of students uh, who had returned to in-person learning. The staff members diligence in mitigating the health criteria minimized the impact to spread and risk of spread in our schools. But we were impacted significantly um, as a result of what was taking place and what continues to take place in our community. Um, this screenshot indicates that now all three gating criteria areas are within a significant red. Um, and as it relates to the resolution. Again, we will continue, I will continue as well as our team to engage the board. To engage our stakeholders, both at the school level, community level, and more importantly, the staff level. But it was clear based on the criteria that was set forth for us. That if two out of those three areas had triggered a red. But unfortunately, the state again did indicate that per the health guidelines, those criterias really in a community standpoint. Didn't necessarily impact schools unless we were having operational challenges. And I think if you look across the state based on where the case positivity rates are. The majority of school districts across Delaware are indeed having um, those impacts from those operational challenges. We have again continued to meet with and the Department of Health has released a new updated FAQ. On COVID-19 prevention and reporting in schools that was released on December the 10th. As recently as today, myself along with many of my cabinet members. RCEA President Kelly Fierco, DSEA Representation, UNISER reps for all of our employee groups. Met with the Department of Education to get clarification around. Updated guidance because if the initial gating criteria is no longer to be used. We're seeking guidance from the state in terms of what metrics we would use as a district. What metrics would I bring before the board and or the community to determine transitions? Understanding that there are vaccines that are available. But we can't guarantee obviously at this rate. You know, that process and that's something that's out of our control. And so we're continuing to work with the state to get clarity around updated metrics as it relates to schools. To continue to mitigate the risk. Because these decisions aren't easy and again, it's, it's, it's counterintuitive to think that we simply want to keep schools closed or close schools for the sake of closing schools. That that's never our intent. Over the six weeks that we were able to have some semblance of in-person learning and again, thank you to. All of our employee groups and staff members who made that possible. Thank you to our families who were, who were bearing with us as we went through rolling quarantine measures. You know, quarantining individuals to specific classrooms to grade levels upwards to schools. You know, various sports teams, but you know, and we thank our community for bearing with us and, and living through that process because our families. Have also, you know, bearred the burden and I don't want that to get lost. You know, in these decisions that we have to make and, and they are indeed tough decisions. And so we're continuing to work and rely on that state guidance to help determine. You know, what are those mechanisms or metrics that we as a school district and school system need to follow? If the information relative to community data. Is no longer valid for us to make those decisions moving forward. And so again, we continue to engage and work with the state. As it relates to that gating criteria and changing in the grading, gating criteria specific to our schools. On another note, as we continue to live through this pandemic, we, we are keen to focus on. You know, instruction, the impact that instruction, whether that would be in a remote environment or in-person environment. Whether that's looking at learning loss, but more importantly. Challenging ourselves to continue to focus on instructional practices and teaching and learning. And so we're working with several partners. On an instructional framework that's aimed to create a shared vision of learning experiences for all students. And experiences that all students should access. And that vision in that instructional framework is underpinned by our equity philosophy. Which is dedicated to supporting all students, the staff through culturally responsive practices and breaking down barriers. Eradicating historical disparities and academic excellence and personal success. And we are committed to closing. And as we stay here at the achievement gap, but it's also the opportunity and access gap. The beauty and of our district is that we are diverse district, of diverse learners and unique learners. Whether that's through our autism program, our metalwood specialized program, our early years program. On up to our career pathways and the diverse programs that we offer. You know, it is my goal as superintendent to accentuate the many positives that we have throughout our districts and showing again. That the learning experiences of all students. Is a credible and valid experience, but all students have the ability to access so that not only are we looking at. The achievement gap, but more importantly, the opportunity and access gap. So I'm working with our curriculum instruction department, our equity department, diversity committee. Our school and building level administrators. We, we've done some analysis and study on the opportunity myth through a partner, T N T P. Which really talks about four key points, which is strong instruction. Great appropriate assignments, student engagement and high expectations. Now, when we talk about great appropriateness, we also see the impact of this pandemic. As it relates to that remote learning environment and while we do want schools to remain open in a safe manner of fashion. Because of the impact that remote learning is having on all students and subgroups of students. And so that work is again, really looking at equitable access. It's not random. We do know based on data and research. That white students or students who come from higher income families are more likely to be in classrooms that offer those four key points. That we highlighted, which is strong instruction, great appropriate assignment, student engagement and high expectations. So there's our goal to ensure that every school, every classroom throughout red clay. Has those tenants again, so that every student throughout red clay has access to high quality instruction. Within that instructional framework, we're looking at five key areas. Equitable classrooms, rigorous lessons, authentic engagement. Academic discourse, again with students are deepening and demonstrating their learning. Through discussions and collaboration and then more importantly, data-driven decision-making and instruction as we continue to progress. Teaching and learning throughout our district. So as we continue and this work actually started back in the summer as we prepared for remote learning. And our curriculum and instruction department actually in the spring of last year participated in a design thinking. To really get our curriculum and instruction departments to think about the student experience. And, and I want to thank, you know, Dr. Harold Shaw. And other members of our curriculum and instruction department and our educators across the district. Who are continuing to work to promote diverse voices and perspectives. Who are really seeking and looking at input and feedback and ongoing refinement of lessons. And then really looking at, you know, things within our equity team and department diversity committees. And really ensuring that identity and bias are addressed and then obviously promoting continuous learning. Not only for our students, but for our staff members and our school leaders as well. So we will be forming subcommittees going into the month of January. And also focusing on again, the impacts of this pandemic as it relates to. Supporting learning laws and recovery services. That we know all students, again, all subgroups are experiencing as a result of, of the current state that we find ourselves in. Also with that, we're looking at diversifying teacher workforce and increasing diversity and teacher pipelines in red clay. And this is just a number of partners that we're working with. Neighborhood School District Colonial is also partnered in this work. We're working with Delaware State University. Dell Tech, University of Delaware, Wilmington University. This is funded through a Mike and Isusa Dell Foundation grant, the Department of Ed is at the table. And also the Rodell Foundation, but it's really looking at how we can enhance our ability to grow our own. Through the Teachers Academy, which is a career pathway. That many of our high school students have the opportunity to participate in. Really working at teacher residency, how can we support teachers and educators through robust professional learning, but more importantly. Credible experiences through a residency program. And then also, you know, enhancing and supporting our pair to educator, pair to teacher pipeline as well. So we are working on and looking at how we are increasing, increasing and diversifying. And that teacher workforce by growing our own here in red clay. Also to share and I want to thank. Mr. Sam Goldar, Holly Goldar and, and others throughout the district. For cultivating a new course that will be presented in 2021, 2022 school year, which is an ethnic studies course. Focus on themes such as social justice, social responsibility, social change, but also civic engagement and reform. And really again, enhancing the diverse nature of our school district to promote. The qualities of instruction and, you know, engaging through student voice and other avenues throughout red clay. We're also asking you to join us tomorrow. The holiday season is a tough time of year. Outside of a pandemic, but we know within this pandemic, there, there's a lot of, of stress, strain and anxiety throughout our community. Again, having, you know, three school age children within my household. Also, my wife is a high school educator. We know that, you know, this time of year brings about some challenges. So tomorrow's town hall. Is working with our dynamic school psychologists. Um, and it's an evening of self-care where they'll be working on strategies and sharing topics. That includes strategies in dealing with anxiety, grief, self-care for our students, mindfulness. And things simple as positive self-talk. You know, the, these are tough issues that we're confronting with. And I routinely give myself positive affirmations to get through those hard times. Knowing that the decisions that we make are challenging ones. But ones that do add to, you know, that anxiety that we might be experiencing. And so this third town hall that we will be. Participating in tomorrow night through a webinar format will hopefully offer resources. Uh, to our school community as it relates to social emotional learning or self-care. So please join us tomorrow evening. Um, the online session will air from six to seven thirty on the red clay YouTube channel. We also want to take this time for you to nominate a red clay life changer of the year. There are seven nominees who have currently been nominated throughout red clay. So you can either nominate an additional staff member or individual throughout our district or more importantly. Go on to support the current nominees so that red clay can have the state winner. For a life changer. So we applaud those who have been nominated thus far. And again, we ask that you go on and, and support or, you know. Nominate another individual or support those who have been nominated thus far. So again, the red clay life changer of the year. Please go on and support the deadline is December the 31st. Also, the red clay education foundation continues to support our efforts as a district. So we want to thank the members who serve on the red clay education foundation. They continue their effort by awarding an independent scholarship to the students and teachers throughout red clay. They recognize Ms. Kimberly Stock, the Delaware teacher of the year, who is the state teacher of the year. Again, we were so fortunate to have Ms. Stock. Not only be the district teacher of the year, but the state teacher of the year. And so the foundation provided her. With an award so that she can actually provide supports. with an award so that she can actually provide supports to students by having an author, Christina Enriquez, come and actually support those students so that, you know, that the notion or the adage that you can become who you see. And so having our students do, you know, that program at McCain under Ms. Stocks tutelage to be able to meet and engage with an author who again, looks like them, but who has also accomplished as a New York Times bestseller, actually engage them is a powerful tool. And so again, thank you to Ms. Stock, but also thank you to the red clay education foundation for supporting that endeavor. And then the love continued to pour in from Ms. Stock. She received a special visit from Miss Renee O'Leary, the nineteen eighty-two Delaware teacher of the year, who stopped by McCain to present her with a custom gold watch on behalf of the past state winners. This is a longstanding tradition for Delaware and one that Ms. Stock will have the pleasure of continuing. And it's time, when it's time for her to pass the torch. So we want to thank Mrs. O'Leary for coming to present that award to Ms. Kimberly Stock. And as Ms. Green indicated earlier, just in terms of, you know, community partnerships, and for those who we didn't have the opportunity to acknowledge publicly, we want to thank all of those community partners, the faith community, the business community, our nonprofit sector, philanthropic groups and foundations for again, supporting all of our efforts throughout red clay. And this is one of many examples when Hardwire donated over two thousand, two hundred thousand, excuse me, face shields to A I DuPont Children's Hospital and the state of Delaware. And we were so fortunate that red clay was included. And this initiative came out of Senator Chris Coons office. So I want to thank Mr. J J Francis, who works out of Senator Coons's office for his diligence and helping pull this together along with others at Nemours, Ms. Yvette Santiago and others for making this event, one that we know our frontline workers and our educators are included as those frontline workers and providing those face shields to students, to teachers, and again, frontline workers throughout the state of Delaware. And again, red clay is fortunate to be a recipient. Also red clay special services team, you know, fights hunger with a virtual food drive. So hats off to the red clay special services team for raising over $2,000 through a virtual food drive with the Food Bank of Delaware, who we also enlisted as a contributor and a partner. So again, we thank the Food Bank of Delaware for the work that they're doing. For the last couple of years as a part of a fall meeting, they've included an opportunity to donate to the cause. So thank you to Dr. Sarah Celestin for her leadership. And this year they focused on fighting hunger in our community. So among those who participated in the drive were district special services staff, school-based specialists, including special education coordinators, our five oh four coordinator, school psychologist, behavior analyst, speech therapist, occupational therapist, physical therapist, and together they crushed their goal of $1,200, raising two thousand three hundred and nine in a two-week drive. So again, every dollar will give will provide not only a gift of food, but the gift of hope for food insecure families and children. And that's a quote from Dr. Celestin. So thank you to everyone who contributed to this great cause and more importantly, for supporting the community throughout red clay. And so we also want you to sign up for those who don't have the opportunity or haven't had the opportunity to receive this week in red clay, which is a newsletter. You can go on to the district homepage and scroll down to quick links and click subscribe to receive that newsletter. And so if you haven't, or if you don't receive it, please go to redclayschools.com, go down to quick links and click subscribe to receive a copy of that newsletter. And I believe that may be the last slide, but before I conclude my superintendent's report, yesterday we also received a notice that Ms. Sonia Saunders, a fifth grade science teacher at Brandywine Springs Elementary or Brandywine Springs School has been nominated for Presidential Excellence Mathematics and Science Teaching Award. They selected Ms. Saunders for the red clay, or excuse me, as a Delaware state finalist in the science award category for grades K to six. The mathematics category includes mathematics, technology, computer science. And the science category includes science and engineering. Delaware state level finalists will be honored through various media and events this year. And again, we'll be notified of any events which are, we'll recognize the twenty twenty state finalists. So congratulations to Ms. Sonia Saunders from Brandywine Springs for being nominated or named a Delaware state finalist for the presidential awards for excellence in mathematics and science teaching. Again, the accolades continue throughout our district. Again, another demonstration of the quality educators and teaching that's taking place. And we're fortunate to have educators such as Ms. Saunders throughout our district, but more importantly, we elevate and congratulate her on receiving that distinct honor and recognition. And just also, and lastly for the board, just to be mindful that the Reading Consortium didn't have an official vote last week on several recommendations that they will be moving forward with through their various committees. For example, the Reading Consortium on, in the subcommittee on social determinants of health recommended that they advance equity and early learning childhood program services and education. So that was submitted by Ms. Dawn Alexander on December the seventh. The recommendations require things such as required developmental screening, increasing early childhood assistance program funding and slots known as E cap. That's preschool program, increasing home visiting services. The educator work group focused on areas where they looked at recommended program towards recruiting and supporting related educational programs, community members and parents, and other representatives of school population. They recommended that, you know, our institutions of higher ed create partnerships with already established teachers academies in Delaware, which again, this is something that I mentioned earlier in terms of our work in diversifying the teacher pipeline. It's work that's already taking place in red clay. So the work that we're doing is already aligned to many of those recommendations. They looked at developing and advertising the teachers academy for future teacher programs, especially to increase those enrollments for critical shortage areas and candidates. And then also really looking at the Department of Education Scholarship and tuition forgiveness programs to be expanded. The funding and governance group recommended to make final edits to referendum reform legislation, House Bill one twenty-nine. The funding and governance co-chairs created an act on engagement strategy that are going to support. And they also looked at the consortium co-chairs re-filing, redistricting governance legislation to formally allow the consortium to work on governance efforts in twenty twenty-one. And so those are just some of the other examples that have been put forth. If the board members hasn't or haven't been really following reading, again, this is just an update. They do have obviously public meetings for the consortium. But I just wanted to give an update as to some of those recommendations that the consortium had voted on at last week's meeting that will be moving forward. That concludes my superintendent's report. And again, I will conclude with just by simply saying that we are committed to engaging our school district community, the decisions that we make over the course of this pandemic and moving forward will not be at the exclusion of various partners. And I stand firm on that, but we also will be mindful that, you know, the health, safety and guidance and gating criteria as it relates to the guidance that we receive from health officials will continue to be followed. That concludes my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. We appreciate it. Okay, so now we are moving forward to items submitted by the board and I know I have some items. Does anyone else? So we can order this.
President Thompson, I have some items as well.
Okay, so I'll go if that's okay. And then Mr. Matthews. Anyone else? Okay, I'll begin, okay? I attended a number of meetings. As I mentioned, I attended the board policy committee on twelve two. We discussed the policies that we voted on tonight. All were in agreement and the students were exceedingly additive throughout, active and additive throughout the whole process and really were very vocal about some of the things that they wanted to say, which were captured in the policy. So I want to thank them. I attended the CFRC, the Community Financial Review Committee on December eighth. We are in line to have three new community members. And that's really great and they're welcomed. We can use community support. Mr. Golda walked us through the exhaustive unit count process and what that means for the district. It was exceptionally helpful. We discussed that due to students moving from the district or being classified as no-shows, our units have dropped this year by twenty-three, which is quite concerning. The state protects ninety-eight percent and we're asking this year due to COVID requirements that the state raise that to ninety-nine percent. It's really needed. I don't know if that, if the state came through and finalized that, but I hope that they do.
We're still waiting on official word for that, President Thompson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. So we're still waiting, but hopeful that it will come through because we need it. Tax receipts were on target last month and this month they dropped by half a million dollars. We're still expecting another two million from late tax payments. And we suspect that this too might be a bit low. So planning for an overall scenario where our tax receipts are lighter than we anticipated, which again, is concerning and problematic. Overall, our revenue is down as mentioned, and our expenses are down as well, which is good news. We're waiting to hear how we're funded on the unit count, as I mentioned, by the state. And we should hear, we're hearing that the state budget news for next year is not real fantastic. We should hear something by January twenty-eighth. The red clay budget is typically provided in January and may be postponed to February, depending upon how it rolls out from the state. And I'm hopeful that with our new presidential administration, perhaps there'll be some additional federal dollars. So the CFRC was very informative as always. I attended the RCEF, the Red Clay Education Foundation on twelve nine. Mr. Green gave an update on schools, remote versus hybrid for six weeks and then closure based on the state criteria and operational difficulties that were created thereby. Kim Stock, the Delaware teacher of the year, presented and thanked the RCEF for the gift they provided. She was exceedingly helpful and and vivacious, which was really, she's spectacular. There were lots of questions about the district's provision of meals and food to students. The district outreach, I think everyone has agreed has overwhelmingly been amazing. And the district is even providing evening meals. The RCEF was really amazed at everything. We got a financial update. And then the best quote of the day was from Mr. Green, which said, some, his grandfather told him that sometimes you're the dog and sometimes you're the hydrant. And everybody really, really enjoyed that. So that was a moment of levity, levity. Okay, I also had the opportunity during the RCEF meeting. Ms. Stock offered the opportunity for members to meet with her and I took her up on that opportunity. So I had a wonderful and delightful meeting with Ms. Stock. She has a full agenda as the red clay teacher of the year and as the Delaware state teacher of the year, much around EL needed supports and teaching methodologies, equity for English learners and culturally proficient schools using anti-bias principles. It was really enlightening as to some of the things that are not necessarily required of teachers during their training in Delaware. And Ms. Stock has some great ideas. And I would ask, I would hope that we could have Ms. Stock presented a board meeting or perhaps a workshop. I think it would be beneficial for all of us to hear our Delaware state teacher of the year as well as, or red clay teacher of the year, as well as the Delaware teacher of the year with her platform, her thoughts, which were really enlightening as far as I was concerned, and perhaps other building teachers of the years could participate. So that would be something that might be worthwhile for us to engage in. So that's my report from the committees I attended. So thank you. And now, Mr. Matthews.
Alrighty. Good evening, everyone. I too attended a number of meetings in terms of committee reports. We had a facilities committee report on Monday, December fifteenth. This was our annual and quarterly meeting. At the meeting, we welcome two new members, Tim Stabicki and Corey Budaszek. And we also renewed a member, John Johnson and Rob Johnson. And we certainly appreciate their service. One of the big updates that we discussed at the facilities committee was the ESCO, the Energy Services Company project that we implemented in twenty thirteen, twenty-three million was put into it in terms of improvement. We are on target for savings. We are in our sixth year of the project. Two of those years were in construction. And this year, due to the pandemic, we are falling a little bit short on savings, but that's due to the increase in the uses of HVAC usage as we had to implement the ashry safety standards throughout the pandemic. A facilities assessment was also provided in terms of an update on where we are with that. The facilities assessment is going to be submitted and provided to the board in August of twenty twenty-one and submitted to DOE for a certificate of necessity thereafter. The facilities committee is going to provide their recommendation. And we'll schedule a workshop for the board's review and participation. The next facilities committee meeting, we meet quarterly, is going to be March fifteen, twenty twenty-one, for those who are interested in attending. I also attended the CAD Fund Committee, which I sit on as well. That was Tuesday, December eighth, seven PM. We are currently in giving Tuesdays. If you would love to give, please visit us on our website, Cab Calloway School Facebook page, or donate to the Cab Calloway School Fund dot org. There's a donate button. I know it's the holidays and if you're looking to be generous or give back to the school community, you know, your funds are certainly welcome, certainly welcome. We also have a mentoring program. We provided some updates there as well. Currently, we're helping students prepare for the auditions to get to CAB. For those of you who don't know, which is one of our magnet schools and certainly a highlighter in our district. Another item, so those are my committee reports. And Kathy, President Thompson, I certainly agree with you on bringing Ms. Stock to a board meeting for a special presentation. I think that would be a lovely idea and I certainly, I certainly agree with that. One other thing that I wanted to mention to this board is that recently, last Wednesday, Connecticut, the state of Connecticut passed legislation to include African-American, Black, Puerto Rican and Latino studies. If you'd like to look up and read the act, it's Public Act nineteen twelve. Here in Delaware, we have red clay legislator, Representative Sherry Dorsey Walker, who is currently working on a bill to implement some of the same, you know, things here and great things in our state as well. I'm going to be working on a letter of support. I would love to provide it to the board and would love our board members to sign on to a letter of supportive, including those offerings for our diverse student body. And that concludes the rest of my report. Thank you.
Well, I have a committee report as well. So I wanted to report on the diversity committee meeting. There was no meeting in November, but there was one for December fifteenth, and it was a very, very informative meeting. I enjoyed being there. So they definitely talked about the new ethnic studies course, which Superintendent Green talked about. They talked about the student town hall that's tomorrow night. And then they spent a significant amount of time talking about education station, the red clay youth voice bus. And that's where students from our district can share their thoughts and their feelings. And the focus is on the student experience in red clay. And I believe that all of the students that were interviewed in the video that we were shown by the diversity committee were youth of color. And what they talked about was really interesting because I know Mr. Matthews and I have talked about these issues on a number of occasions. So they talked about many of the things that they experienced in school, in our schools, in red clay schools as students of color. So they talked about feeling unaccepted in red clay schools. They felt that they weren't empowered. They weren't given the tools to feel empowered. They felt judged because they're black and brown. They talked about dominant group students and educators making them feel less than because how they wore their hair, how they looked and the color of their skin. That was a very informative video and I really appreciated hearing that and seeing that. They also, in the diversity committee, they introduced T N T P, which is a nonprofit organization that red clay works with, and they gave a really informative report as well. They discussed the opportunity myth, which we on the red clay school board like to refer to as the achievement gap. And T N T P actually said that we're not talking about an achievement gap at all. What we're talking about is an opportunity gap, right? And words are What we're talking about is an opportunity gap, right? And words are important, words matter. So we should. Rephrase the terminology we use. And they said that the gaps in student outcomes. Were the direct result of the fact that some student groups. Had more access to resources and opportunities than other student groups. And they looked at data from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen in red clay. And they stated, quote, white students receive a different educational experience in comparison to students of color. This is evident nationally and it's true in red clay as well. So they highlighted huge gaps in performance in our schools. In regards to proficiency based on racial categorization. And they actually teased out the data, which demonstrated that the longer children remain in our schools, the wider that gap becomes. So that means that if we take a snapshot of student proficiency, say in third grade, when we look at the data for those same students, a few years later, the gap has widened. So we're not seeing an improvement for our black and Latino students over time. For our white and our Asian students, on the other hand, we do see an increase in performance over time. So the question on the table is what do these gaps and proficiency indicate about the student experience in red clay? And they stated that what we're seeing is a systemic failure in regard to education in our district. So this is something that the diversity committee is. Looking into and attempting to eradicate and tackle. We know that racism and classism are intersectional categories. And they work together to allow certain groups access to privileges while systematically denying other groups those privileges. So the onus of burden, when we talk about an achievement gap, it places that onus on the students who are not doing well, who are most likely to be. Students of color and those from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, when actually the onus of burden. Needs to be placed on the educational system and how we're teaching, right? And the methods and the manners in which we teach. So based on the work that I've participated in, in the diversity committee, I was really, really excited. To be invited to be a panel participant on education with Senators Lockman and Senator Senator DiColo. On December seventh, and we had an excellent discussion. There were a number of people on the call. We talked about funding and racism. We talked a lot about the Reading Consortium. We talked about redistricting. We talked about school segregation based on attendance zones in red clay. We talked about red clay and the Neighborhood Schools Act, COVID nineteen property reassessment, et cetera. So I want to thank the senators for allowing me to participate and inviting me. I was also invited to participate in a panel discussion. Hosted by State Representative Sherri Dorsey Walker. On legislation for a statewide Black American Studies course, and that was what Mr. Matthews was alluding to. And that meeting today was actually one of the most exciting meetings I've probably been at in the last two years. I mean, it was really, really terrific. There were over twenty five people on the call. There were students, students, students and more students. So it's really nice when people say, hey, we want the student voice to be included, that they actually. Include the student voice. I thought that was wonderful. The Assistant Superintendent from the Brandywine School District was there. There were other school members from across the state of Delaware. There were professors from DSU. And the University of Delaware and community activists and educators. Students led the discussion and they said that they wanted to have a Black American Studies course. And they wanted the course to begin before slavery and they talked about one of the things that happens is that. They usually don't learn a lot about Black American Studies in school and when they do, it always begins with educators talking about slavery. And they said, Black American. History, you know, began way prior to slavery and that needs to be addressed. They wanted to read more black authors. They said, talked about textbooks being flawed and racist. And they want us, we want to center whiteness and racism as the problem, not blackness. And they said that. Blackness in school is considered a bad word because of the type of education that they receive, right? Black people and people of color are looked down upon. They want blackness celebrated. They want to learn about women of color, want to learn about resistance and freedom fighters. And they definitely want the class to be called Black American Studies. They don't want it to be called something else, you know, about ethnicity or whatever it is. They want a Black American Studies course and they want it taught from pre K through twelfth grade at every step of the way. And they want to make the course mandatory for high school graduation. So I just wanted to say how impressed I was by our youth and I'm so proud that they're drafting this legislation and working to fight racism and celebrate blackness in our schools. And I absolutely love Mr. Matthews' idea that the board would write a letter in support of having a Black American Studies class. That is legislated and that is mandatory for students to take. It's required for a graduation. And I would be happy to work on writing that letter. And we can bring it up to the board in the next few months to see if the board will sign it. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to say thank you to Superintendent Green. The administrators, red clay staff, students, family and friends. Like to say, please stay safe, relax and recharge. As we prepare for the second half of the school year. Happy holidays to all.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there anyone, any other board member that would like to say anything? Okay, hearing nothing. I echo Mr. Wilson's comments of happy holidays to everyone. I hope that you and your family have a blessed. And joyous holiday season and everybody does take time to rest and relax. I know it's still a stressful time. That we live in with all this COVID stuff. And I hope that you end up staying safe. And keeping yourself safe and everybody else safe and have wonderful holidays. So with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sabo seconds. Okay. All we'll just do this by voice vote. All in favor? Opposed? Mary, happy holidays, everyone, and thank you all very much. Have a good evening and have a have have blessed holidays.
Holiday.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holiday.